It is sponsored by Citizen Advocates for Public Education. CAPE is an independent citizens group that supports and advocates for quality public education here in Lake Mills, as evidenced by the quality of our teachers, our facilities, and our programs. CAPE works to inform the public about current educational issues and does not support a political party or individual political candidates. We are connected to many public education grassroots advocacy groups around the state of Wisconsin through the Wisconsin Public Education Network. We are here tonight so that you can meet the candidates for our school board and make an informed choice when you vote in the spring election, which is taking place on Tuesday, April 3rd. It is my pleasure to introduce our moderator for the evening, Jim Shaw. Jim is a highly acclaimed educator and administrator in both K-12 and higher education. He's served as an educational leader and superintendent of schools in large urban, suburban, and rural schools. He's the author of several publications regarding leadership, school finance, and co-authored the book, "Learning First: A School Leader's Guide to Closing Achievement Gaps." Jim is currently an adjunct professor at the University of Wisconsin-Madison. He also is a great friend of CAPE. He was one of the founders of our group back in 2013, and we're really happy to welcome him back as our moderator for tonight. Jim?
Thank you, Sandy. It is a pleasure to be here, a pleasure to be back in Lake Mills. Thank you. And it's wonderful to see this kind of crowd. I think this is a large crowd. I've been at some previous forums, and we've had much smaller crowds. So this is CAPE's purpose, to encourage public support for public education, and here is evidence. Thank you. Thank you for being here. I am so pleased to be moderating this because, first of all, I have four friends here that are running for school board, and I'm very impressed that these four people are running for board. They must share your feelings that there's nothing as important as our local school district when it comes to serving our children and building for the future. We have a tight timeline and structure. That structure is pretty much spelled out in the agenda, so if I could draw your attention to that, I would like to explain how we will proceed. First of all, we have a timekeeper, because we do have this agenda, and we have four wonderful candidates that we want to allow them equal time, two minutes of equal time, to express their opinions on the issues that the CAPE Board has designated. So CAPE has prepared six questions, and I will ask those questions. Each board member, each board candidate will have a couple minutes to respond. After the questions from CAPE are completed, we will take audience questions. And I think the best way to do that would be in writing. We would ask, is it Peg? You're going to do that? And Sandy? CAPE members will be, Deb will be collecting questions, and we hope we get a few from the audience. We've allowed time for at least three questions from the audience. If we get more than that, there'll be some kind of follow-up activity on the CAPE website, which will summarize the forum tonight, and we'll also publish the questions that are submitted. So I think with that introduction and agenda, we're ready to begin. We have the candidates Rachel Davies, David Radel, Ken Stetson, and Donna Thomas. We'd like to start with Rachel, and then with the next question, we'll rotate to Donna, and then to Ken, and then to Dave for the questions. So we'll rotate until all the questions are asked. So let us begin the forum with an opening statement, a one-minute opening statement from each of the candidates, and let's begin with Rachel.
Good evening. I would like to thank CAPE for organizing this forum, and for everyone who came out tonight to learn more about the candidates. I'm running for a second term on the school board because I have a deep connection with this district. Having grown up here and graduated from this high school, this one right here, so much so, my connection is so deep that my family relocated back to this district when I was, when my oldest started kindergarten. It was the draw of this kind of community that Lake Mills is and the top-notch education our schools provide, as well as the connections our children can expect from our caring, invested teachers here. Several years ago, I decided it was time to get involved, do the work, and help make our schools and our district everything they can be. As a parent, I volunteered in the schools. As a community member, I joined every available district committee looking for community input. And then, three years ago, I joined as a school board member. My experiences as an educator, a parent, a student, a leader, and a board member allow me to look at each new challenge from multiple perspectives. And as the only board member with children in the district, I bring added value to board deliberations by having firsthand knowledge of how our decisions impact the younger children in our district and their parents. As such, I hope to continue to contribute and be a voice for all stakeholders in the many important initiatives happening within our district. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. Donna?
My name is Donna Thomas, and I'm running for my first term, my fifth term, on the Board of Education here at Lake Mills. My reasons for running is I have a real high priority on young people. My background is in education. I've been a parent, a teacher, and a reading teacher, and administrator, and am now a college instructor. I've lived in this community over 40 years, so I've been very involved in the community. And I really have a deep love for this community. It is a great place. It has a high priority on education, and as an educator myself, I just have been very involved and enjoy the community. I also have a strong knowledge and background in education, having degrees and actually having experience too. Very active in educational things in this community and in the area and the state. So I'm hoping to serve another term on the board. As I said, it will be my fifth term. I've been here 15 years. Thank you.
Thanks, Donna. Ken?
I'm Ken Stetson. I used to be on the board, and I'm trying to get back on. I retired in 1992 from a career of education. I taught for seven years in Jefferson at the senior high school, three years as a beginning, as an initial faculty member at Kankakee Community College in Illinois. And my last 21 years were spent at Northeastern Illinois University, where I did all sorts of things academically, as well as administratively. My wife and I moved here formally in 1998. I have spent 20 years in Rotary, was president one year, 20 years in the Congregational Church PDOT project, and still doing that, and we're meeting tomorrow if anyone's interested. I have two degrees from Madison in history. My PhD is in higher education from Loyola in Chicago. I also studied at Rutgers, University of Chicago, and had an academic year grant at the University of Washington. I have been completely committed to public education throughout my life. One of my granddaughters taught in this district for three years before she realized that driving in from Walker Shaw was too complicated, so she's not doing that anymore, but she loved it here. I have 13 grandchildren, none of whom are in the district, but all of whom are interested in public education. Thank you.
David?
My name's Dave Radel. I'm born and raised here in Lake Mills. My mother taught in the district for 35 years. My mom and dad both graduated from Lake Mills High School in 1965. My father-in-law taught in the district. He was my FIAID teacher when I was in elementary school. My mother-in-law was a librarian in Cambridge, and my wife teaches here. I've been around educators my entire life, and they're the most noble, wonderful people you will meet. This community, this school, the children who are here from every grade level mean a lot to me. I've coached in the district since '95 in some shape or fashion, and got to know a lot of fellow teachers and coaches, and think highly of the people we have here. And my goal, if elected, would be to bring my perspective from the business world, to be a set of eyes and maybe see something new, but to perpetuate the great, great tradition we have in Lake Mills by putting our children above all else. So, thank you.
Thank you all. Now, we have six questions, and the copies of these questions are available on the table, prepared by the CAPE organization for the board candidates. The first question, and we could begin with Donna, concerns the strengths of the Lake Mills Area School District. What do you view as the greatest strengths of the Lake Mills Public Schools?
Well, I had, number one, something that's kind of been alluded to at this table already when people introduce themselves, and I think the biggest strength of our school district is the great community. It starts at the top, and the top is the community. This community puts a priority on education. It allows spending on education. It is generally a higher socioeconomic community. It's involved in the schools. The community is involved in the schools. The schools are involved in the community. And actually, the community sends us great students. So I'd say the first strength is just our community. The second strength, I think, of our school district is the broad-based curriculum that's offered here. There's academics, good balance of fine arts, school-to-career things which are growing. It's increasing, and our good broad base of co-curricular activities, whether they're in the fine arts, or whether they're in sports, whatever it might be. We just have a broad base of curricula. The third thing that I think is our strength is we have this wonderful cadre of teachers. And teachers are, our teachers are very good. We have a nice blend between experienced teachers and new teachers, so we have stability, plus we have fresh ideas coming in all the time about education. The next thing I had down was our facilities and the technology that we have. That's another strength of our district. And the last strength that I had down was that we've had quite a few years now of financial stability in the district, where we haven't been a district that's had to cut things and worry about where the next penny was coming from, because we've had good financial caretaking of the district, not only from the district taxpayers, but how state aid is given to us. So those were really basically my six strengths, starting back with the community, which is really no secret among these four candidates, the four of us sitting here.
Thank you, Donna. Ken?
I agree that community's important, but from my perspective, the most important thing is the staff, which includes everybody from the teachers, the pares, and the administrators. We often forget how difficult it is to teach. Every day is a new challenge. Even if you have the same students and you're in the same area, it is a difficult task because of what's going on in your life, what's going on in their life. There was another shooting today. Now we have another dimension that we have to worry about, and the whole issue of arming teachers and all that stuff. But in any event, it's what goes on in the classroom between the teachers and the students, in my view, that's the most important thing. Secondly, I think our facilities are phenomenal. Keep in mind that Lake Mills, little old Lake Mills, is the only city in the world that has two LEED Platinum Buildings. Now, that's pretty remarkable. If you go back to the middle school remodeling, we kept the building open when we, in the old building, we used, the kids were using the school, and we added the new section, the same year that they were in school. Then we moved the students over to the new section and remodeled the old section, so we lost no instructional days at all, and that building became a LEED Platinum Building. First one in the state. Then we got a national award. And then the elementary school, which was easier to do because it was from scratch. You could start that from zero. The middle school was not that case. But both of them are phenomenal facilities. There's great cooperation between buildings. The curriculum is coordinated between the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school, and that's extremely important. There's a, I think the role of the school board is very clear. It is an oversight view only. It sets policy only. It doesn't say what goes on in the classroom. That's up to the teachers. Thank you.
David?
Well, this will echo a lot of what both Donna and Ken said, but first and foremost, it's the community support that we get, and it doesn't matter if it's a sports contest or a concert, or a little play being put on at the elementary school. Parents and grandparents and community members come to see. They want to be here in our schools, and that's just a huge strength. I can say, as a coach, it means so much to our kids when that gym fills up, and the energy that that gives them. And family support. It's amazing. We have wonderful parents in the district who are there for everything. Secondly, the staff. We have great staff and have had great staff for as long as I can remember. In fact, I have a first-grade teacher up at the, my first-grade teacher up at the table with me, which is kind of neat. Wonderful staff who engage with their students, who build those relationships, which above all else encourages learning, what they're able to do. We have wonderful administrators at every level. They work their tails off. They put in long days and nights, but that's what they signed up for, and they do a phenomenal job, and I don't want us to forget what they accomplish, day in, day out. And our facilities are outstanding. There's a lot of work looking forward that we need to look at and may need to be done, but the schools that we have are outstanding, and the boards that have come before that have put those buildings in place have done a phenomenal job.
Thanks, Steve. Rachel?
So, yeah, I'm going to be repeating a lot of what they already said. We're a strong community with very, I mean, extremely committed parents and community members. This involvement creates a strong foundation on which, to build a solid school district, we are so fortunate to have the community support that we do, the sheer numbers and turnouts for any concert, any musical. I mean, you know, there is standing room only usually for these activities. Soccer on Saturday mornings, you know, it's just, it's, when I tell people from out of town what it's like, they can't believe it, you know, from such a small town, how many people come out to support the kids and the activities that we do here. The support our community offers is just truly second to none. Our staff and their commitment to the quality of education that they provide and the care they bestow on our children, it's the reason I moved back. We were in the DC area for a long time. I didn't, everybody else talked about their education. I didn't in my opening statement, but my, you know, my career is built on education. I was a teacher. I was in education research, and now I'm in higher ed assessment, so I am an educator as well. And we moved back when my son was starting kindergarten, and I said, nope, this isn't what we're going to do. We're going to move back, because this is where we needed to be, and the strength of the community and the education our children receive here is phenomenal. Another strength is a continued push forward by our administrators. They're always reaching and looking towards the future of education, and they're setting stretch goals for their staff and their programs. They're always looking for what's next, what do our students need, what do our students need to get to the next level, what types of professional development does our staff need in order to support the students that come through our doors, all of those things. Of course, our facilities are one of our strengths. They continue to win awards of excellence. They're great for the environment, and they provide a healthier environment for our students and our staff members. And lastly, our current school board. I can't say enough about our school board that we have. Our district is very lucky to have the type of people that run for school board here. The decisions that are made policy-wise, that are the base on which everything else happens in a school district, we wouldn't be where we are without our current school The board right now is comprised of individuals with a lifetime of experience in education, and that's just, we take that for granted, I think, right now, but that is not how it is in most school districts. So we have, we should be thankful for that, most definitely.
Thank you, Rachel. The second question from CAPE concerns the challenges of the Lake Mills Area School District. And I'm going to ask Ken to begin this round. What do you view as the greatest challenges of the Lake Mills Public Schools? How do you propose meeting those challenges? How do you propose we attract and keep teaching staff with the upcoming teacher shortage?
That's a good one. First of all, I think the biggest challenge is going to be enrollment. I remember a few years ago, we had a graduating class of 104, and the next year it was 142, and we tried to figure out how in a high school we were going to handle all that. Now what you see in each building is we're kind of bursting at the seams. We built the elementary school in anticipation it would last five years before it reached maximum. I think it's there already. The middle school has large classes. Those are going to go to the high school. We do not have enough physical capacity in the high school to handle that, and if there are any children that come in with 144 things that are going to be built in town, we're going to have a greater influx. I was sitting in the lobby of the elementary school one day when I was going to talk to Amanda, and a woman came in with a kindergartner and a second grader. She said she'd like to take a tour of the school. And I said, I'd be happy to take you around. And as she walked past, I said, where are you from? Where'd you move from? Waterloo. Why did you come here? Because of the schools. People are voting with their feet, and they will continue to do that. So we have that as a challenge. Distribution by grade is important, because if the seventh graders are large, they'll still be large when they get to be seniors, and that wave is something that we have to address. We also have problems with mandates. The state might say, you should do this, and they'll tell us we have to do it, but there's no money. So unfunded mandates are a real challenge. The federal government has a lot to say about public education, but they fund almost nothing in the school district. So we have that problem. As far as keeping teachers is concerned, I don't know. It's an attitude. A few years ago, teachers were vilified. They were just lazy. They were terrible, and it led to Act 10. The key to Act 10 is it diminished teachers. It made them feel poor. It made them feel poor, and financially, they were poor. But the real problem with that same approach was that the state's support for this school, and every school in the state, went down $555. It usually goes up $200 or $300 per year, went down $550. We are just now getting back to the level that the state supported us in 2012. So financially, we have a challenge. Room, we have a challenge, and morale is going to be a problem, if it's not already, given all of the pressures we put on the teachers. I don't have an answer for how to do that, but I know it's a challenge.
Thank you, Ken. Steve?
Lot of challenges coming forward, and I agree with Ken. First and foremost, we have to look ahead and see where our enrollments are trending and what we need to do ahead of time to make sure that we have the space that will allow for those children to get the best learning experience we can give them. I think that's being addressed, but that's something going forward that we've all got to really be looking at. Making sure that we engage our community. We do have a very involved community, but we need to keep the community engaged. Both families and businesses can partner, and that's something I'm very keen on, is the partnership of all the stakeholders in our community to make sure that our schools and our children get the best opportunity they can. And lastly, keeping up with advances in technology. Technology is evolving at a pace faster than I know I can keep up with, and how does that, how is that integrated into our classrooms at all levels? How are our children engaging with that technology, with those resources that they will be using in the future? How do we make sure that we give them the best opportunity to learn how to use that, use those tools? And can we teach them to use those tools, or will they be teaching us? Is something we have to look very closely at, because I believe education is changing, certainly from when I was in school, and we need to let them lead the way with the things that are important to them. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Rachel?
I would say our greatest challenges lie in our desire to keep up with current technologies within our curriculum and staff programs to the extent that we would all like, and keeping our facilities up to date to meet the needs of our students as well as, and our programs, along with any anticipated capacity issues. So I'm sort of echoing again what all others are saying. But these really come down to budgets. State budget cuts and revenue limits and funding constraints are all problems that, you know, they don't sit on our shoulders. They sit at the state level and the federal level. So those are challenges that we have to meet by continually communicating with our legislators and letting them know how these things affect us. So basically, it's how schools are funded. As for the challenge that all districts face in attracting and keeping qualified teaching staff, over the past three years, we've had to dig deep and really look at this as an issue in our district, and we're not alone, but we've implemented several of things in the district with regards to attracting teachers and then also keeping them. We've implemented exit interviews for staff that leave the district in order to identify the areas where we need improvement here. I know that surveys and opportunities for staff to weigh in and provide greater input into key issues has been ramped up and improved, and even on such things as the district calendar and professional development opportunities, staff are given the chance to provide input on all of these things. Creating staff committees to investigate and provide input into key initiatives like teacher salary schedules and benefits. Other things we're doing are continually looking to provide, to improve benefits while maintaining fiscal responsibility, improving the communication pipeline at all levels and with all stakeholders, and providing more staff ownership of programs and initiatives, implementing professional hours rather than straight hours that, and no one can leave the building, treating staff more as professionals like they are, increasing the starting teacher salaries for the district, that's something we worked on for a long time, implementing a modern salary table that is better aligned with today's teacher, providing educational opportunities around insurance and other benefits so the staff can get the most out of these benefits, creating better school environments with new facilities, and including current staff in the design phase, and implementing programs like late breakfast and at the middle school and the high schools, and the school backpack program at the elementary school. Although most may not make the immediate connection, feeding hungry kids cuts down on behavioral issues and improves the classroom environment for everyone, including the teacher, and the list goes on. I believe there are many more things we can do as we continue to communicate and identify areas for improvement, and not everything, but not everything has to be big. Sometimes it's the little things that make all the difference in a teacher's day.
Thank you. Donna?
I could reiterate almost everything that everyone has said, and especially the things that Rachel's talked about, about retaining teachers. But before I start my challenges, I'll just add one other thing to our list, and that is that we can start beginning mentoring programs right in our own high schools and encouraging our students, who are very good students, to go into the teaching profession. As you look around, I don't think a lot of schools do enough of that, of bringing back their own home talent. People were, people like Rachel that have come back, or like David that come back to serve our school district and maybe do other things. In terms of the challenges, I could talk more about the school funding. Ken has talked somewhat about funding, but as all of you know, we operate on a formula, and it's not a good formula. It's been flawed since its inception, but so far, we haven't found anything better, so we continue to struggle along with it. I could talk about school facilities as a challenge. They're always a challenge. Ken talked about those two. We're in pretty good shape with our facilities. We're now focusing on our high school, but it isn't only building these facilities. You have to maintain these facility and do ongoing repairs, which, again, is expensive. But some of the other challenges that I see coming are, first of all, I think that one thing that's going, is it beginning to be a challenge not only for us, but for all districts, is the greater diversity among our student populations. I think we have a changing student landscape. We have a lot more cultural and language diversity. And one thing we need to have here, we need to, and we're looking at it all the time, is expanding our program for English-language learners. We have limited staff right now, but our population of students who English is a second language is growing. We have greater socioeconomic... We have greater socioeconomic diversity. We have greater diversity in learning needs and skills that students have. The second challenge I think we have is to keep up with student achievement. Right now, our state test, not our state test scores, our state's test scores are not the highest. I think you read it in the paper all the time. And ours are a bit above the state, but they're not as high as we should have them and that we want them to be. So a challenge for us is in student achievement, especially in reading and math. The third thing I think that we need to do is we have, we're having, we're going to have a greater challenge. Right now, it's a minimal challenge and yet, it's already being felt. And that's a challenge between what is public school entitlement and the competition from private schools. Whether they be religious schools or they be charter schools or voucher schools or whatever they might be. We're going to talk about that later. I think another challenge for us is where there's a shift. We need to work to open the minds of our communities and our student population that the way to the American dream that we all know about or especially my generation, the baby boomers know about, is through four-year college educations. And that it's shifting to school to work and careers and careers that don't require four-year college educations. That's going to be a challenge. It's going to be a whole change in mindset for us because our children look to teachers and to those of us who are, as their role models. We're all people that have college educations. All the teachers have a college education. I have a college education. And so, but that's not necessarily, to my parents, that was the way to the American dream. But that's not true and that's changing every day. Our children will change jobs at least seven times during their work lifetime. They won't be like me where I was a one-stop shop. I got into something and stayed. I think the other thing is that we need to start, a big challenge will be to address not only the mental abilities and success of our students, but to deal with the physical and the emotional well-being of our students, the healthy well-being of our students. I think you know, you look, we look at all these school shootings and we're finally, finally, we're talking that maybe it isn't only the guns, but there are troubled youngsters in our midst. And we need to start working on the mental health of our students. How can we do that? We need more counselors in our schools. I mean, that sounds like a simple fix, but I'm only putting that out there because it's just one quick thing. But we can lead to go into more personalized instruction. And the last thing that I had on my list where I think it's really a challenge is that we need to begin using our communities more and involving them. More, David talked about that. Never before have we had communities with such educated people. I grew up in a community where most of the people were not educated. If they finished high school, they were lucky. But that's not true today. And we have a whole cadre of senior citizens in our communities that have these tremendous talents. And they're just waiting to give to our schools. And we need to find ways to get them more highly involved and contributing because they're there and they're willing. Plus, we have parents who can be more involved in decision-making than ever before. So that's a challenge for us to get those people involved. So in addition to the big things like school funding and school facilities, these are the little things. Are there solutions? Some have easy solutions and some are more difficult to solve. But I think it's something that Lake Mills has always looked to be on the cutting edge of emerging ideas in education. So that would be my answer.
Okay, thank you, Donna. Perspectives. As an incumbent, how will you keep your perspective on the board fresh and open to new ideas? As a new candidate, how have you educated yourself about this, how the school board operates? And David begins that one.
Well, this endeavor goes back about a year was the first time it kind of popped into my head that this was something that I thought I could do and do well and bring some ideas to. So you start following from there. I have been involved with CAPE for the past two years. A great organization that talks about issues that are facing our public schools. The other things that I've tried to do to educate myself on the schools beyond being, I spend some time down at the elementary school and I would encourage anyone to find some time to volunteer at our schools. If you have the chance, I get to read with a few fourth graders twice a week. And it is, it is educational for me and entertaining as well. But it also gets me into a school where I don't have children anymore, into a new school. And to look at it as I'm able to, as an outsider, I find what our staff are set there to do is pretty amazing. So I think I'm all, I only have new perspectives to come in. And that's what I feel like I can bring.
Thanks, Dave. Rachel?
I'm fairly new. Not new-new, but fairly new. I've only been on the board for three years. But one of the pushes for me when I was considering running for the board, prior to that, I was on every committee I could get my foot in the door to, to sit and help and work through and listen and understand and provide input to, you know, any of the issues. Not only did I do the facilities committee for the elementary school, which was a year-long committee. I also sat in on our mission and vision and beliefs. Not sure, mission, vision? Yeah. So I sat in on those workshops and sat with, you know, a varied audience of people and their ideas of what our school should be striving for and what words can we use to represent how we feel about our schools and our students. But after that, you know, I thought, well, I could do more. I could contribute more. Rather than just sitting on the sidelines and talking to parents and expressing my opinion, I could actually be involved in some of the decision-making. I could be involved in leading our district. So, you know, some of the things that I did then as a parent, I still do as a parent, but also now with the added hat of a school board member, but as a listener. So I'm continually talking with other parents and listening to the things that they say about the district and about our schools. And usually, those things start with the words, "I wish." Since my kids are young, I have those moments too where something happens or comes up or they tell me about something and I think, "I wish." So as a member of the board, I've always felt like it was my responsibility to bring these ideas, these wishes to the board, especially in context when we're talking about the, you know, the topic that those wishes, that those wish lists are involved in. So I bring those ideas to the board for consideration. If they don't involve board things, I try to, as a parent, bring it up with the administrators. And I'm sure they're tired of getting my emails, "Hey, what about this?" So the "I wish" becomes "what about." So living here in the community and having younger kids in our school provide plenty of opportunities for me to hear those wish lists and to hear and to learn and understand the current trends and the wish list items that our community has to offer. As Donna said before, our community is very highly educated. And it was, it was a bit of a surprise, having grown up here, it was very rural. And when we moved back, I hardly know anyone here. Most of the folks, a really large percentage of folks moved here from somewhere else. They had lives outside of here. They have, you know, their kids grew up or were born somewhere else and then they moved here. So they bring with them all of those ideas and all of those experiences and all of those wish lists that are really fun and interesting to hear. And they're all, you know, good ideas and they're all very valuable. And so I try to take, so what I will do to remain fresh is to continue to have those conversations and keep my ear and actively listen to all those wishes.
Thank you, Rachel. Donna?
Well, I have a couple waves that I keep my perspectives fresh. First of all, I go to the grocery store. Now I meet people at the grocery store. I spend a lot of time at the library. I love to read. I've always been a reader. My first love is reading. And I started out as a first-grade teacher where you teach reading and I was a reading specialist. So I go to the library a lot. I go to a lot of sporting events. And then I also do substitute teaching now and again in area school districts. So I get a good perspective of what's still going on in schools, whether it's at an elementary. I try to substitute across grade levels from, anywhere from K to 12. So I get my good perspective from that. Professionally, I belong to a lot of state educational organizations. In fact, going back to the idea about the teachers and how are we going to recruit and retain teachers? And when Ken said he wasn't sure how we could do that, I have to tell you too, I serve on the Wisconsin Board of the Trust, Scholarship Board as a trustee. We have a lot of money to give out to people who want to go into teaching. And we used to get 500 to 300 applications for these scholarships. And when we stopped giving them, we were only getting a handful of people. So that kind of tells you about the pool out there, that there just aren't people even when you're giving scholarships. So I belong to a lot of professional organizations. And then I'm also involved in, with, I still have quite a few friends that are colleagues around the state and we get together and talk too. But my main input, besides taking courses and talking to others, comes right locally from the community. After all, these are Lake Mills schools. And this community needs to be allowed to have input and determine what they want and hope for the success of their children. So keeping fresh is not a problem. Just go to the vegetable section down at the grocery store.
Thank you, Donna. Ken?
I forgot to mention when I was talking about in my introduction, I'm really a native of Lake Mills. I went to kindergarten through second grade here. And those buildings no longer exist, which tells you how influential I was as a grade school student. I think the board has been especially proactive over the last several years. The school, the physical schools are one thing. But I served on the facilities committee for six years of the nine years I was on the board. And Bob DePiero and I spent almost a year trying to figure out how to convert the old auditorium into a new auditorium. And we couldn't raise the roof because that would require too much work. We couldn't figure out a way of configuring the chairs so we could get more students. And we didn't know what, I threatened to pull my hair, which, pull my hair out, which of course was a real threat at that time. We ended up, Bob said, "Why don't we just tack it on to the end of the, end of the building on the south side?" What a great idea. We did. It costs marginally more money, but it's twice as many students and it's a beautiful facility, as you know, if you've been to anything there. So I think that's important. One of the responsibilities as a school board president is to make remarks to the graduating class. And a few years ago, I was asked to make a speech because I was the president of the board. And we were stressing character education. Well, my wife and I had been to New Zealand and I had gotten a poem from a performer in New Zealand. And I read this to the students at the commencement. It's entitled, "The Guy in the Glass." "When you get what you want in your struggle for self and the world makes you king for a day, go to the mirror and take a look at yourself and see what that guy has to say. It isn't your mother, father, or wife whose judgment on you must pass. The fellow whose verdict counts most in your life is the guy staring back from the glass. He's the fellow who please never mind all the rest because he's with you clear to the end. And you have passed your most difficult test if the guy in the glass is your friend. You may be like Jack Horner in Chisel a Plum and think you're a wonderful guy, but the guy in the glass is you are a bum if you can't look him straight in the eye. You may fool the whole world on the pathways of years and get pats on the back as you pass, but your final reward will be headache and tears if you cheated the guy in the glass." And I thought that was appropriate because that class pushed very, very hard for character education. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
I'd like to just intervene for a minute. We're about halfway through our forum. And we want to honor the time of the people who are here and give them an opportunity to ask questions. So I would ask, moving into our next three, have a, quite heavily loaded content area questions, to stick as close to the two-minute time as you can for your responses. We'd really appreciate that so that we can stay on our time schedule. And then also have the audience have a chance to ask questions if they have any that have not been answered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sandy. Rachel starts this question on the statewide voucher program. "The school voucher program is now a statewide program that is impacting Lake Mills with public tax dollars supporting private schools. Do you support the voucher program? Why or why not? Do you support voucher transparency legislation? Why or why not?"
I could keep that really simple and say, "No," and "Yes." No, I definitely do not support the voucher program. As an educator, I never thought I would see a program that mixes public dollars with private predominantly religious interests. We've all heard the horror stories of schools where students showed up after break or on a Monday to the doors locked and closed and no notice, but yet, they took the public money and left. We've heard, there are numerous reports out there, news reports, where students have requested their diploma and their transcripts from schools that are no longer in existence and they were told, "Go get your GED," even though they went to school and graduated from that school. But it is now no longer in existence and nor did they transfer those records to the public school system. So I am not a supporter or a proponent for the voucher school program. I, to be candid, it's unfathomable how we even got to this point and the program continues to be expanded. I hope someday that our state constituents realize the impact it's having on our public school system and on the students in our state. And I will tell you also, I've taught in the public school as well as the private school. And there is a huge difference in the requirements of, from public school to private school in what, what private school, private schools don't have any requirements for servicing students with special needs, ELL students, nothing for, you know, gym, nothing, you know, they are not, they don't have the same requirements. So it's, they don't have the same reporting requirements for curriculum. You know, where I was, the teachers kind of made it up as they went, kind of figured out what they wanted to do, you know, was all, you know, lovely. And we were, you know, anyway, gym was outside because there was no gym. There were no sporting, there were no sports or extracurriculars. It's, it's a whole different ballgame. And the fact that we use public money to fund schools that are, for the most part, I don't have the statistics, but a large number of them are far inferior to the education and the programs that are our public schools provide for our students and our communities. I think that it's a sad state that we're in right now. Can you tell I feel strongly about that?
Thank you, Rachel. Donna?
I'm just going to make some more philosophical statements because I believe in the public schools. I've spent my whole career in the public schools. I'm a product of the public schools, both K-12 and at the college level. And I support the public schools. I believe that there's a federal and the state constitutions found the concept for the public schools. It's, states have long supported public schools. But I also believe that parents should have a right to choose where their children go to school. Vouchers are the center of what is known as school choice. This is where parents have a chance to make decisions where their children go to school. So do I believe in vouchers? Yes, I do. Being around, they've been around in Wisconsin since about 1989. The voucher schools, although many people think they're just religious schools, they're not necessarily just religious schools. They could be private schools. They could be specialty schools. They could be boarding schools. They could, and they're growing. That's why, that's why they're under such discussion right now. It's because they used to be just religious schools. But now, they're growing into greater numbers and especially specialty schools. They might be online. They might be online schools. Probably all of you here have seen them advertised on TV, K-12 schools. Those are all kind of voucher schools. So, and I believe that parents have a right to choose because I believe in the democratic process. They have a right to decide. Now to the, back to the vouchers and the parents' right to choose, the issue has come up because the question is, should the state provide funding to these voucher schools? And that question has really already been answered too. This has been going on for years and years. It goes on at the federal level. When the hot lunch program started way back in the early 50s, federal dollars were sent to private schools. Transportation is another instance where private schools get transstate, our taxpayer dollars. There are programs, if you know about Chapter One, Title One, homeless programs, Title Two. These are all taxpayer-funded monies that go not only to public schools, but go to, go to private schools too and schools where children may go to school. So this has been going on for a long, long time. In 1989, they kind of started in Wisconsin and Wisconsin was one of the first places with a program called 220, which is a program for Milwaukee Public Schools. And they allowed children from the center of Milwaukee to go out into the outlying suburban schools and the state paid money for it and gave them money. So the answer to voucher school funding is yes. States have always, our state, Wisconsin, has always given money to them. However, I got a, I have one caveat here is that anybody that gets state money should all have to meet the same rules. Rachel said something about this, about the rules. And that's not necessarily happening right now. And that should happen and they should be governed by all of the same requirements, rules, and laws that any public school is. The last part of the question on this thing that was sent to me was, do I support voucher transparency legislation? Well, maybe some of you don't know what that is. But what it means is that on your tax bill that you would get, there would be a line that told how much money of your taxpayer dollars that would normally go to your school are going to voucher schools. And they, it isn't on your tax bill yet, but we know that because every year we get information from the state that tells us. And right now, Lake Mills has seven students in 2018 that are drawing money, taxpayer money, to go to a voucher school. And it's amounting right this, in 2018 to about $57,000. And there are rules about how high numbers, how many students can go to a voucher school and still get tax dollars. I think it's up right around about 2% right now. So do I support this legislation where they would put it on all of our tax bills, just like they put on how much money goes to Matic, how much money goes for our trash? I support that legislation. However, I don't know if we, if you look as much at your tax bill for the trash and the Matic as I do, you're probably not going to get a real clear picture of what it is. So do I support the legislation? Yes. But I also support parent choice, parents' right to choose where they want their kids to go to school. So.
Ken, thank you, Donna. Ken?
Come from, from a different perspective. I'm a historian by training, so I had to go back and try to figure out the background on public education. Alexis de Tocqueville came over from France and wrote a book called Democracy in America in 1839, in which he tried to explain to the people in France how the society was leveling in America, but even after the revolution in France, there was still the rich and the poor and there was a huge gulf between, that didn't exist in America. He attributed to education. The last piece of legislation that Abraham Lincoln signed in 1862 was the Morrill Act. The Morrill Act established land-grant colleges, University of Wisconsin-Madison being but one. Each state was given 30,000 acres for each representative in Congress, which meant every state got 90,000 acres to support colleges that they were going to use to educate the public. How does this relate to vouchers? Well, not necessarily directly, but philosophically, I cannot support vouchers. I just don't think it's right. If vouchers are going to exist, then they should be held to the same standard and that is not the case now. And that leads to some of the vitriol about the voucher school system. But the commitment of America is to common schools and leveling of society. And we still believe that, I think. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Dave?
No, I do not believe in the voucher program the way it is set up now. And I think, like many here in the audience, my perspective is the more recent changes that they've made with vouchers. And it's really, it's not, it's a way for people to send their kids to the private schools they want to and not have to pay as much out of pocket. They certainly deserve that choice. I think Lakeside Lutheran and St. Paul are two of the greatest, great assets that we have here in this community. A community this size that can support great public schools and a really great private school is, is rare. All right? And that's an attraction to this community. But they don't have, they are not held to the same standards that our schools are held to. And if we're going to give them money, they should be held to those same standards. They should have to show us their books and tell us how and why they're spending our money. So that lends into the second part of the question, yes, it should be transparent. Because I think by making it transparent, people would become more aware that these dollars are going to. And in my mind, in my opinion, the only reason it's not on the tax bill is because they don't want people to know. So.
Thank you, David. I think the, I'll take the liberty here to say that Cape, I think, really wanted audience participation here. So I, since we had a forum or a meeting earlier about facilities, I would suggest that we eliminate that question and go to the last question, which I think is probably more urgent and more current right now and for the public to hear what the candidates think about school safety. So I think, let's see, this question begins with Donna.
Donna?
With Donna?
Oh, no.
Donna, it, school safety. Given the frequency of school violence, how do you feel Lake Mills is prepared to handle such a threat? Do you support concealed carry for teachers? What are realistic ways for us to address the mental health issues our students face? What ideas would you bring to the conversation?
This is pretty a hot topic and it's kind of a topic that's pretty close to my heart right now because I think that Lake Mills is prepared to handle the safety issues as good as anyone can be prepared. I mean, this is going on all over the country and people are working and it's a focus of our discussions and our actions and our money and our time, and yet it continues. So we haven't found the magic answer yet because if we did, we wouldn't continue every day. Like Ken said, there was another shooting today in a school. So no one, there is, there is proof that this is continuing, so we need to work. As far as teachers carrying guns, you got to realize that I started teaching in the 60s and nobody would have ever thought that the teacher, a teacher would have ever carried a gun. So I say no off the top of my head and based on my own knowledge and experience. I don't believe that teachers should be carrying guns. But I also know that you never say never because I don't know what's coming about and it looks like maybe we're moving in that direction. Facing mental health issues that our students face, I alluded to that before, is to one of the biggest challenges that I think we're going to face within the next five, 10, 15 years. Because even if we take all the guns off the face of this earth, it's not going to solve those kinds of problems. What do I think the solutions are? I think the solutions are, number one, collaborating with other agencies, social services, law enforcement, PATA, Boys and Girls Clubs, other nonprofits, things to get kids involved. We need more assistance and support activities and training for families. The family today, we're all under stress and our kids are under stress. Okay? That's it. I won't give you anymore. You can ask for some more in the questions.
This is not a new topic. I went to a national school, school board convention in 2004 and I went to a breakout session on school safety. And they had a picture of a young man with a trench coat and it said, how many weapons does he have? 15, 18? 104, including a four-foot sword. And he just laid them out on the table, opened his coat, took them out. And the guy said, there is no way you can protect your students. Be aware of that. And I got thinking, well, that's pretty weird. Well, how are we going to do this? He said, the first thing you do is number all of the exits. So when you do call the police or the fire department, they come to the right door. Four years it took, but by gosh, we now have numbers on all of our exits. So that's important. The other thing he said was, you really can't make it foolproof because as you know from the heists that are going on now in, in the world and they just drive trucks through the windows. Look at our, all three schools, including the two newest ones. They could bust right through. Or they could take a shotgun and bust through two panes of glass and you're there. I mean, we have to be aware that it's very, very difficult to protect people in a public place like a school. If you've been to Washington at all, around the FBI, they have huge concrete flower boxes about every eight feet, just wide enough that you couldn't get a car through. And in front of the White House, they have steel plates, three quarters of an inch thick, that span the whole thing and they're hydraulic. And they're against the traffic. You can't get onto the grounds of the White House until those are laid, laid down. Otherwise, they're at a 45-degree angle and you can't get through. That's the White House. And they still have crazies going after the White House. So you have to be cognizant of the fact that as hard as we're going to try, it's going to be very, very difficult to protect our students.
I agree.
Thanks, Ken. Dave?
It's a very, very sobering topic. My opinion is, we need to make sure that we are interacting with each and every student every single day, gauging that child on, on where they are and how they, how they're doing. And that falls on our teachers. So I say, do our teachers have all the support they need? If a teacher sees a child struggling, whether it be in the elementary school or the middle school, are they able to take that child and take them into a safe environment and have a conversation with them to see how they're doing? And I don't know that they do. I don't know that the administrators right now are able to. And a lot of that is a function of the budget. You know, can we bring more aides in? Where if a teacher needs to have someone watch the class for a few minutes, well, they take this young boy or girl out to the side to find out what's going on in their world? What are the, what are the things that they're dealing with? I think that's the first place you have to attack this issue, is with each and every child and where they're coming from. Because from my perspective, looking at what you hear, the stories after these terrible occurrences happen, is they just missed it and you hear the story that that child's, how his life or her life had just, they just didn't have the support. We need to be able to allow our staff and, and to have the staff there to engage with those kids. Because I think that is first and foremost, the place we can attack this and start winning this battle and turning the tide. The gun debate is a debate, unfortunately for politicians. School boards, we're not a political body. We're here to serve our community and serve our kids, is my idea. But I, we hope on their end, they make some good decisions moving forward. We'll see.
Thanks, David. Rachel?
You know, how do I feel about Lake Mills? Is it prepared to handle a threat? I would echo the, the idea that I think as well as it can be. I think all of the steps have been taken, the staff is trained, they routinely go through those exercises to make sure that they, they understand and the students also understand what it is they need to do. But you know, until it happens, you can only be prepared as much as you know to be prepared until it happens to you. And the late, not today's incident, but the Florida incident really reminded me of 9/11 where no one thought that a plane could be used in that way. We all thought about hostage situations, but not using a plane as a bomb. Well, in Florida now, we have a fire alarm to bring the students out of their classrooms and have them accessible to a shooter. So it's those kinds of things that you're only as prepared as you know to be until it happens to you. We have a lot of things already in place in the buildings, buildings, the middle school and the high, the middle school and the elementary school are built in neighborhoods. So those doors can be locked, students can be locked in their neighborhoods as well as in their classrooms. But how well do those things stand up to an assault rifle? Well, probably not so well. But you know, we have all of the schools, you have to be, you know, buzzed in, you can't just enter willy-nilly style, you have to go through the office. So that's our first, first line of defense. You know, there are lots of things that, that are happening in the schools to make them as safe as they can be. In terms of what we can do, 30 seconds, come on. What we can do, another, the thought I had to, the, the, the piece I think is the most important, is making those connections with kids, making them feel welcome. I drop my kindergartner off every day at school, he gets out of the car, hi Quinn, hi Quinn, how are you today? Whenever I'm at the school and I run into anyone, not just teachers, but any of the staff members, they know those kids' names. They ask them how they're doing. They tell them, you know, good morning. They, you know, greet them in some way, high-five them, whatever, but the kids feel connected. I know that that happens in the middle school. I watch it happen there too. When the teachers are out on the playgrounds, when they're in the hallways, when they're making the connections, when they know the kids' names, the kids feel welcome. And a couple of other things, just real quick, that we're also doing, the backpack program to feed kids who don't have food on the weekends. That, that makes a kid feel safe. The programs, we have, we have the school store at the middle school that any child can visit. We have clothing for kids, we have washing machines for kids. We are taking care of our kids on a whole nother level than we were when I was in school to make sure that the kids have what they need so they don't feel ostracized, they don't feel like they're, that they're different, so that they feel like they're connected and someone cares about them somewhere. Those are the things that are really important.
Okay, thank you. I think Sandy has some questions from the audience.
If any of you would like to fill out a question form, okay, and get each half of the form, we'd like you to submit your question in writing, add your name to that and you can share it with the community. And I have a question that was submitted to me via email because the person could not be here tonight. So we'll start with that one.
A question for the candidates. As our schools grow and become more diverse, how will you embrace diversity? What measures do you support to keep drugs out of our schools? I guess that's perhaps two questions. So how about answering the first question? Embracing diversity. As our schools grow and become more diverse, how will you embrace diversity?
It goes with the second part and it also goes with the school violence that we just started and the mental health issues.
Okay.
They all fit together.
All right, then.
What would we do? Things like Rachel talked.
I think it's Ken's turn.
Hey, I, that's one of those questions I don't think I have an answer for. I mean, there are so many things that are going on now. It's like the juggler starts out with three balls in the air and you give them a fourth and you give them a fifth and you give them a sixth. There was a political cartoon that I related to the other day. There was a guy berating a teacher, saying it was an easy job, you don't work during the summer, you don't work very long and all, by the way, here's a gun. Please solve the problem of violence in our schools. I mean, how can the teacher be all things to all people? And there are so many societal pressures. Diversification would start with the staff. We've got to be able to relate to kids in their language or in their culture. But it's hard to find bilingual teachers. It's very hard to find people from underrepresented populations because they don't go to college very often. So I don't know that there's an easy answer to that question.
Yeah, thank you. David?
You know, I think one of the strengths of our district is our character education. I think character education is, is about embracing everyone. It doesn't matter someone's race or what language they speak. To be a good person is being a good person. And I think that is carried through all of our schools. So I think we're on the right track with that. I think diverse, a diverse student population brings a lot. I think diverse, a diverse student population brings a lot to the school. And I, I would look forward to that day, where our kids can learn from each other. As far as keeping drugs out of, out of the schools, there, there's a battle. It goes well beyond the walls of this school. That's been, it's been going on for a long, long time. Making sure that we educate our children with the DARE, DARE program at the elementary school and, and starting early with them, making them, helping them understand the, the problems with drugs. Obviously, again, it goes back to larger legislative issues as far as things dealing with the opioid crisis that we are suffering through and, and we are relying on other people to, to help solve that. But educating our kids as to why they don't want to go down that path and, and engaging with them.
Rachel?
The diversity question, how, can you repeat the questions again?
As our schools grow and become more diverse, how will you embrace diversity? What measures do you support to keep drugs out of our schools?
Okay, how to embrace diversity? It, it just happens. I mean, embracing it, I don't, when you talk to the kids, I don't think they see it like we see it from the outside. Those are just their classmates, you know? And, and to the teachers, they're just their students. I think that, you know, the one thing that could be beefed up a little bit is cultural education for teachers. But I know that those initiatives are happening, and they've been happening over the past couple of years. Educating, having teachers, there are, there are book clubs and things like that, other initiatives that are happening within the schools where the teachers can, can talk about, you know, those cultural issues. Because if you've never, if you've never experienced those in your personal life, then you don't have that to pull from when you're talking to someone from another culture. Even things just like, a little girl was having trouble, she couldn't pronounce the, the word quack. Well, and, and the teacher said, well, you know, it's what a duck says. Well, in Spanish, a duck doesn't say quack. So, you know, it's, it's those kinds of nuances that, you know, educating the staff so that they understand that in, in different languages, if you've never experienced that, and it's no fault of the teachers to never experience that. So if you don't know, you just, you don't know what you don't know. So having those kinds of discussions. But in terms of, you know, from a kid's point of view, it's, it's not, I mean, I can remember being in elementary school and my two other, it was the three Rachels, Rachel, Rachel and Rachel, but we were all culturally diverse. And, but we didn't think of it that way. We just thought it was cool that our name was Rachel. But we were the, 30, gosh, 30 seconds. So the only, you know, the only, it was just really cool that our names were the same, but that was the only diversity that was pretty much in our school at that time, was in my grade with my two best friends, Rachel and Rachel. Now, you know, it's not, it's, it's not the same, you know, kids are just kids. And the only, when it becomes a problem is when, you know, the parents or society start to put that on them. As far as the drug question, drugs have always been a problem, but I think that that's another one where it's communication and is where teachers and the people that are around the kids aren't afraid to have those conversations with the kids. If you suspect it, you report it. Even if you're like, I'm not really sure, I'm not really sure, have the conversation. It's a tough one to have. And also, and also giving parents the tools that they need to have those difficult conversations with their kids. That's not something that we, my generation, we didn't have those conversations with our parents. It was just kind of like, expected that you didn't do them, but then, you know, people did. But if you have, if you, if you give parents those tools, that toolbox on the questions, the things that they should be looking for, not as, you know, a rigid dictator, but having those conversations because kids want to talk and they want to talk to you.
Thank you.
I'm going to just quickly sum up everything because we've said it all. And it has to do with, what are we going to do? We're going to continue putting kids first. That's what this school district does. They put kids first. That's what this community does. They put kids first. And that's why they have the schools that they have and the programs that they have and they're trying to meet the diversity challenges and all of these other challenges that we talked about. And that is that we just put our students first and deal with them and continue to try to find ways to deal with them as individuals, so that they have good self-esteem, so that drugs aren't a problem, so that they aren't there to shoot up the school, that they have a clear understanding of themselves, where they're going and what they want to be. That's kind of the whole philosophy of our school district.
Okay, thank you. I think everybody had a chance to respond to that. The questions from the audience, some are addressed to individual candidates and some are more general. So how we'd like to do this, these questions now, is it's sort of a choice of candidates to respond. So I'm going to ask the question, and it's not required that all of you respond. So let me take the most general questions first, and then we'll get more specific. Here's one, I think, kind of a general question. You talk about decreases in teacher and school funding, which is primarily handled by the state legislature. How would you go about handling cuts in funding and, I think it means for teachers and for schools, as a school board? So not as a state problem, but is there something that you can do as a school board about cuts in funding and teacher compensation?
We did it. When we had the big cuts five years ago, you had to decide which, you want to keep a janitor, you want to keep a para, you want to stop teaching X and let that teacher go? I mean, it is really ugly. We sat and talked about 11 people we were going to have to let go because we didn't have the money. And there's no easy way around that. It is very, very difficult. You can lobby the legislature, but they, they're in their own world, I think, sometimes. And they don't really understand what it's like close up when you're dealing with students.
Anybody else want to respond?
Well, I, um, just to piggyback on, on your point, I think the thing that legislators and a lot of folks don't understand, and this comes from the business world, you have overhead costs. There's a certain amount of funds required to run the, to, to open the buildings and keep them open every day. And a certain amount of money that's required to, for the electricity and the technology and the textbooks and the chalk, you know, or the crayons or the, you know, whatever paints for art or the copy paper and all of that. So you have those base costs. Those are overhead. And then you have the variable costs, which are teachers, right? But what do you need to run a building, run a school? Not just the building, it's the teachers. You don't have a program if you don't have a teacher. The most valuable resource a school has is its teachers. That's it. And the clients are the, the kids. So, you know, when you're talking about limited budget, you don't really think about the fact that you already have, you know, buses, gas, you know, you have to clean the place. You need cleaning supplies. You need desks, you need chairs, you need light bulbs, you need all toilet paper, you need all of those things. And those are definitive costs. They're overhead and not what anybody really thinks about when you're talking about running a school. And the only other, the only variable costs you have to work with are your teachers, your teacher salary and your staff. So that's pretty much the only place you can cut when...
Let me give you another example. There are 11 roofs on this building. Why are there 11 roofs? Because we incrementally added 11 sections. And whether you believe it or not, every one of those joints leak. So we had an assessment. We had somebody come in and say, what would it cost to fix our roofs? The answer was $650,000. We had $50,000 for repair of roofs in the budget. So we took the one that leaked the most and fixed it, but we didn't fix the others. And it was miserable. We had mold in the buildings, you, well, thankfully, we're past that at the moment. And hopefully, we won't go back to that. Because I think in this community, you'd be willing to increase the taxes in order to make a better facility for our students. That you've proven by passing the last referendum.
Here's another general question that I would like to throw out for the board to respond to, our candidates to respond to. Recently, a 14-year-old student considered suicide as a result of bullying. I understand that there is be-good-to-our-neighbor philosophy hammered in K-12. Great. Why can't our teachers, paras, other staff see or suspect that this is happening and that it's on social media? How can we hold bullies and their parents responsible? Okay, David?
The social media factor, which, which I'm trying to learn as best I can, is an aspect that we as a society have never had to face. The, the ability for something to spread across thousands and thousands of screens that are in people's hands in an instant is frightening. It's a great tool, but it's frightening. We've reached, reaching out to those kids, I'll go back to what I said about, I mean, are our teachers able to interact one-on-one with those kids who are struggling? I'm not sure that they are. I don't know that they have the classroom support. I, I had a conversation with a friend of mine who teaches in Watertown. And he was a tech ed teacher. He's no longer a tech ed teacher because the discipline problem in their middle school has gotten so, so prevalent that he's had to become essentially a discipline teacher. That's what he teaches. He's working with the kids over there. That has just become so rampant, that's all he has time to deal with. And his first comment to me was, our teachers do not have the time where they can grab Joe, leave the classroom and have that conversation with Joe, even though they know he's having a bad day. They don't know why he's having a bad day. We need to, to do whatever we can to allow our administrators, our teachers to have that time to build that relationship with their kids.
Going, going back to my little list that I didn't have time to present before, about helping students with mental health issues and working on the mental health issues of our students. It was on, what was one of the things on my list, too, in addition to working with other agencies and working with training for parents, we need more counselors, too. Counselors are, I'm very sure, not only in our school district, but in almost all school districts. As mental health issues and social issues of students increase, that's one area of personnel where we probably have not increased the amount of staff in proportion to the number, to the increase in the issues that arise. I think we also, this, but this again goes to money, I think we need to have smaller class sizes. We may think our class sizes are, are small in Lake Mills, and they are, according to the state standards. But really, as the mental health issues of kids increase, it's like David said, there's just so much one person can do. And teachers would have greater opportunities. I think we need some changes in our school rules and procedures. I'm telling you, if you look around, in my day, punitive worked. Punitive doesn't work today. That's not a, that's not a viable option. I was, you know, it isn't, my dad talked and we all jumped. That doesn't necessarily happen today anymore. Punitive isn't going to work anymore. So we have to look for different strategies to work with the self-esteem and building self-esteem and understanding of the self. And that's probably, we need to do more of that in the kindergarten, so we get a good start. The time to start isn't at 15 years old. The time is to start. Students who don't feel good about themselves don't learn the same way students who do. And we need to get everybody and students feeling good. I also talked more about, we need more mentor programs. Some schools, we have mentor programs, where students mentor students. So that's another thing that we could do. And we also have to have more intermural and outside programs for our students. I know we have a host of co-curriculars and interscholastic athletics, but we could have intermural programs, too, for students. And I think that's what our recreation department is trying to create. So these are all things, I think, that we could do, just ideas. I'm sure there's a lot more out there if we tapped into people's knowledge about things that we could do. Bullying is a problem. I mean, it was a problem when I was young and when all of you were young, and it's just increased. And now there's technology to, to use and there's a whole group of people out there that don't understand the technology, so they don't understand what the kids are using.
There, there are some specific questions for individual board members, and I'm going to just share those with, with individual candidates. But we have one more general question. And I think it can be, try to answer this quickly, please. This person feels that Donna Thomas has answered the question about arming teachers with guns. Could all the candidates answer how they feel about arming teachers?
I'm opposed.
I'm opposed to that.
I can't imagine having to, something's happening. And, and I have to make the choice whether I'm going to pull out my gun or go unlock it from the cabinet where it sits and get my class to a safe place. Because I have to make that choice. If you give me a gun and I'm in a classroom, I have to make that choice. And I can't imagine standing there with chaos going, bullets spraying, pulling out my gun and having to shoot a former student. Now, you're asking me to kill a person. I'm a teacher. I teach kids. I don't kill kids. So although it's a very dangerous situation, I just, I can't even imagine anyone would want to put a teacher in that position, to have to make those kinds of decisions and essentially commit to killing a person. I just, I can't even, I can't even imagine what that would be like. I would, I would quit. I would not be able to make that decision. Because that's, that's an impossible place for you to put me. And now I'm carrying a gun. What happens if I fall? If the gun falls out? If I accidentally hit a student, yeah, shoot a student? What happens if a student is really angry and comes over and gets the gun off of me and shoots somebody? It's ultimately my fault. And I'm responsible. And so now I'm going to go to jail and I'm going to face all kinds of litigation for something that was an accident, that never should have happened in the first place, because I shouldn't have been carrying a gun. So my answer is no. I don't believe in arming teachers.
Okay, we have two questions. One for each, one for one candidate, one for a different candidate. In the interest of time, I'm going to ask to go to the closing statements. I will share these questions with the individual candidates and hopefully, they can respond individually. So we have time for a closing one-minute statement after hearing the questions, after making your presentations and hearing other candidates. Could you make a closing statement? And could we start this one, I think, with David?
As I, as I was thinking about this closing statement, this goes back quite some time. I was living in San Diego in the, in the early and mid 90s. And I decided to take a job with the Summit School Program, which was a program for San Diego County Schools, where I was a teacher's aide in an off-site school for kids moving in and out of juvenile hall. There were kids who, because of zero tolerance, had, were expelled from their schools. And it was that point in my life, I realized, I always wanted to somehow be engaged in the education of kids. That's why I've coached. That's why, it's not, I, I like basketball, but I really, really love being around the kids. And this is just one way for me to serve my community and serve this school that did so much for me. That's why I'm here. That's why it's important to me.
Okay, Rachel?
I'm finishing up my first three years as a board member, and I just feel like I have a lot more to contribute. I have more to contribute to the conversation about our schools and I just, I mean, I feel like I'm not done yet. And I'm not afraid to speak up, ask questions, challenge, question our actions, think outside the box. I'm not afraid to look for new ways of thinking and doing and consider new ideas for making our district great and bringing out the best in our staff and our students. Overall, making this a great place to be a student and a, and a great place to work is, is one of the, the things that I, that I, I really strive for and I have a passion for, even just as a parent. I'm constantly, you know, trying to donate things or what do you need or what can I do for you, that kind of thing with all my kids' teachers. It's with my continued passion and enthusiasm that I truly hope to continue to be a voice for everyone and to contribute to the many important decisions and initiatives happening within our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Donna?
Okay, I, I've spent my entire career putting kids first, and I'm hoping that I can continue to serve and continue to do that. I have knowledge and experience of education and I have something to continue to contribute to the conversation. I'd like to keep working to keep our schools great.
Thank you.
I'm older than most of you, and I can remember when I was in grade school, we were told to hide under the desk in case of an atomic bomb. Think about that. We're down telling kids to hide under desks to get rid of a shooter who might be in your room. But we used to go... in your room, but we used to go through drills all the time. Hey, I, I don't have any closing comments, other than to say that schools are a microcosm of society. The problems we have in society are the problems we have in schools. I have a cousin who started a construction company in Des Moines, Iowa, years ago, and he retired and subsequently died, unfortunately. But this is part of what he said to his employees after he told them he was retiring. "For the moment, be still. Count the ways you are blessed. Be thankful. Be slow to quarrel. Search out a forgotten friend. Suspend suspicion. Be trusting. Write a love letter. Share a treasure. Give a soft answer. Encourage youth. Show your loyalty in word and deed. Nourish a grateful attitude. Keep a promise. Find the time. Don't harbor a judge. Listen. Apologize if you are wrong. Be understanding. Be slow to envy. Forgive. Think first of someone else. Show appreciation. Be kind. Count on miracles. Laugh more. Deserve confidence. Be gentle. Wage war against prejudice. Worship your God. Gladden the heart of a child. Decry complacency. Take pleasure in the beauty and wonder of the earth. Make every day a Thanksgiving. Speak your gratitude. Speak it again. Speak it still again. Speak it once more." If our society could adopt a philosophy like that, we would have a lot fewer problems in society and a lot fewer problems to address in schools.
Thank you all for your participation today. I'd just like to say in closing that I've been a superintendent in suburban districts, urban districts. I worked at the university and had a chance to be in many school districts. What you saw tonight is what makes a great school district. The involvement of students, the involvement of the community, CAPE organization for putting this kind of forum together, and some wonderful board candidates. This is what will make Lake Mills a successful school district, has in the past and will continue in the future. Thank you for being here tonight.
I would just like to take a few minutes to thank, first of all, our candidates. I know it was really difficult to stick with our timeframe, and I appreciate your patience with that and your trying to be concise. We were able to present a lot of topics, which provides you with a lot of information to consider as you not only consider our school board candidate election in April, but also all the variety of educational issues that face us as we move forward. So thank you, candidates. Thank you, Jim, for coming home to Lake Mills and moderating this forum for us. And thanks to all of you for taking time out of what I know are your busy schedules to be here and to not only be informed, but to also be involved. High school students, I am just really thankful that you are all here tonight, and I feel great hope for our society as we move forward, to see that you are present and that you are involved. I also extend an invitation to any of you. I have to do a little commercial for our group, Citizen Advocates for Public Education. We've been around for five years. We invite you to join us. Join our email list, become a member, and join us in advocating for public schools here in Lake Mills and across the state of Wisconsin. And most of all, vote on Tuesday, April 3rd. Thank you.
[applause]